The affairs of our citizens in the best way of our ability, in Jesus' name. But welcome, maybe one, to our budget meeting. And we will turn the meeting and open it up and turn it over to our city manager and our fabulous city of Fayetteville team. Mr. City Manager, Mr. Yates.
Thank you. As Jeff goes to the podium, we will jump right in. We do have the team here today to answer any questions that you have. In front of you, we have the topics for today, and they are just that, just topics. They're not necessarily in any particular order. But what we'd like to do before we leave today is we have a meeting planned with you for Monday at 2:00 PM, another budget work session. If we could identify any additional topics that you would like to cover for the Monday meeting, that would be helpful. And if there are, as time permits, if there are other things that you would like to cover today, please let us know that as well. I was having a conversation with a few council members and looking at the topics that we have today and also looking at the topics that we have planned for Monday. We stand open, as always, that if you have individual questions that you would like to spend more time, dedicated time, with staff or the department directors on addressing before we have the budget work sessions, if you will just let me know, we're happy to pair you with those folks and the assistant managers to kind of walk through those. Really, at these meetings, as Councilmember Hare knows so well, and he's been doing this longer than I have, the budget work sessions are really where council is taking the numbers and translating that into your policy directions. So when we look at, for instance, the Stormwater Enterprise Fund and the recommended $1 a month increase to the Stormwater Fund, how does that translate to the council as a policy directive? Those are the types of questions that we're looking to help you, looking to support you as you give us further policy direction on. We think we got it, from what we've heard already, but when you're out and talking to the citizens, as well as being asked to make a vote on this budget, it's always helpful if you're able to say, this $1 a month increase facilitates the half a billion dollars in projects that Sheila, Thomas Ambar, and her team have already identified, as well as supporting the master plan which the council has commanded or directed be put in place now. This is our third year?
Fifth year.
Fifth year. And this is needed while we're working on a comprehensive rate structure that will look at how we fund these projects and pay for our Stormwater Enterprises in a more equitable way, which is also underway. So it's not just the $1 a month increase, it is how does that translate into policy? We're happy to meet with y'all individually on that, collectively on it, but understand that we have limited time because we, some of you have to leave. I will now turn it over to Jeff, but again, this is just our call for what the topics were today, and we have staff here who are able to support that, but we're able to go as in-depth as you'd like or as on the surface as you'd like. Just let us know as we begin if we're doing too much or too little. So with that, Assistant Manager Yates.
Thank you, Assistant Manager Hewitt. So as mentioned, we have some topics today. One item that didn't make the agenda, the formal topics agenda in front of you, which should be on there, is the Environmental Services Fund. We're going to go over the solid waste rate increase as well. It was just left off by accident. So today, just a couple of housekeeping things before we get started. Excuse me. Do we have our parking lot? We have our parking lot, as we have in the past, where we will put your questions and discuss those on Monday. And we have some questions we've already collected that we will respond to on Monday as well. So with that in mind, our topics today, we're going to cover the OCS, the public safety compensation, the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, the Environmental Services Enterprise Fund, which are the two areas where we have rate increases. We're going to cover the transit fund, talk a little bit through about what's going on there because there are some recommendations in there that we want to be sure that you understand, and some, look at how that's funded. And then we're going to talk about a couple of the parking lot items we already have that we captured from Monday night and from some of our discussions. And so with that, I'll jump in. The first thing on our list, excuse me, is the Office of Community Safety, and I want to talk about this real quick. From our perspective, what we were trying to do in this process is capture the OCS and OCS-type activities, but we're really looking to you, as the council, to give us guidance and direction on where you want to go with the Office of Community Safety. We have the four pillars, the mental health response, diversion, violence prevention, interruption, homelessness, risk reduction, and youth opportunities. But under the proposed budget, there are a number of other factors, or programs throughout the city that kind of serve these pillars as well. We identified those, and I'll get to that in just a second and go through that in more detail. But I think it's important to understand that, at this point, it's really about what you, as the council, want to see out of that office, and how you would like us to prioritize those services, prioritize the implementation, and all of those different things. What we try to do is equip you with the best information we have available. Right now, our strategy is continuation, get a director hired. We're in that process right now. We want to, looking at prioritizing mental health response and diversion. As we heard feedback from Dr. Tate, as well as in the safety summit, prioritizing violence prevention and risk reduction, we saw that our data indicates that there's about a two to one calls between violence, violent crime charges versus mental health, EMS, mental health response. We want to look at evaluating, consolidating existing programming. Where is it that we've distributed some of these services because that's how they came up or grew up in the city? And we want to probably bring those together to, under that coordinated effort of the Office of Community Safety. There are some programs that will be coordinated but not consolidated. For instance, I don't believe PALS will be put under the Office of Community Safety, but it is a youth interaction activity. It is also a violence reduction. As we know from talking with the chief, programs like giving them a place to play at night, Safe Place Space, that kind of, those kinds of programs are really good at deterring violence, but that's done through the PALS program and the police department. So it's related and coordinated, but not necessarily under that OCS umbrella. And then we would come back to council, our strategy would be to come back to council and report regularly. Quarterly is what we put on here, but continuing that dialogue, because as we work with it and as we looked at models around the country, similar-sized cities, bigger cities, smaller cities, they all had different components. So really, it was about shaping, shaping this office to what Fayetteville needs and what it's, what our specific issues are. We're unique, as the mayor pro tem likes to talk about our relationship to the military base and that impact on our community and so forth. So with that in mind, I want to just walk you through our funding analysis that was prepared and provided as part of our study. A couple of things I'll say about this initially is the ARPA funding and some of those other funding sources, even in the general fund, are one-time in nature. They're always one-time in nature. So when the program funding runs out, there will be a decision point to either council wants to maintain the program and fund, continue funding it, or we want to end the program or do something slightly different. So some of these numbers in different places represent that. They're not ongoing funding, while others do. Some things like, for instance, the mental health liaison, the homeless coordinator, those are ongoing-type activities. Some of the other activities, law enforcement diversion program, is a partnership right now with the county and some other components that, that money is, I believe, 20 years, it's the opioid settlement money. So we know this is an imperfect analysis from that perspective, but the, really, the goal in providing you this information was to really talk through what it is that the city does that are OCS-type activities. Like I said, as we analyze what's done around the country and in consultation with Dr. Tate, what we saw is there is a basket of services that are a wide range of basket of services that go into that. So with that in mind, I'll pause there for any questions. Before we move on to public safety compensation, I just wanted to give you that backdrop. And again, what we're looking for from you as a council is direction and consensus on where you would like us to take that. I will point out, the $1.5 million at the very top is, includes the director's salary and the fun, then the funding to make it $1.5 million. So that's the total. That funding is built into your base budget at the current tax rates. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions or look forward to any dialogue.
Thank you, Dean Hare. I guess this is why I want to make it really clear to folks at home that I think, from a budgetary standpoint, maybe from a staff standpoint, it makes sense to sort of amalgamate a lot of these different figures together. But, you know, just because the airport and the bus transit system both deal with transporting citizens of Fayetteville, it would be outrageous for us to hold against the bus transit system, us opening up a new terminal. And I think that's essentially what the city management decided to do when they put this $4 million figure together, is really obfuscating the fact that we've had experts tell us exactly how much it would cost to develop, not just Office of Community Safety, but to initiate alternative response here in the city of Fayetteville and how much that would cost. And we're really not talking about $4 million, we're talking about $1.5 million, but we're really not talking about $1.5 million because you're saying that last year's, how much was it that we put to the side for an OCS director in the last year's budget?
There was $250,000 in the last year's budget.
Okay, so really, $1,250,000 is all of, that's really been budgeted towards the Office of Community Safety. I know that's not the position of the city manager or the city staff, but that's the reality to anyone who is thinking about this critically. So my question is, what do you need to hear from six members of council, or a majority of council, to where you will budget $3 million of new funding to the Office of Community Safety and make alternate response a priority? Do I just need to make that in the form of a motion and us to take a vote? That's the question.
I think from the discussion, and Mr. Manager, if you want to respond.
The council has the budget now. It is a balanced budget that we've given you. In addition to the motion which council can make at any time before you adopt a budget, I would ask that you give a companion piece to direction to your staff, and your staff is around you, not just the manager. We all are here to support council as you deliberate. And so for the additional $1.5 that, of new money, general fund-supported money, we would, council would need help, and we're here to help you, identify where you would get $1.5 million in reductions in the remainder of the budget, or you would look for an additional $1.5 million in new revenue. $1.5 million is not an absolute and elegant number, but it is about a penny on the tax rate. And so what we would be looking for, if we're talking about $3 million of fresh cash, that would be available for OCS directly-related activities that the council would put in place, or would identify out of the four pillars, if the four pillars still hold, if that's where council wants to spend it. We would not only need direction that, yes, you want to do that, but also we would appreciate council, as you move through your budget work sessions, identifying where you might find the savings or would be amenable to the increase.
A penny for public safety is what it sounds like I'll need to talk to my colleagues about between now and June 10th or June 30th. Just while I still have the microphone, I hope that my colleagues will take advantage of this time that we have with our staff to answer any questions or any, you know, misgivings or concerns you might have with making such a move to, one, fully fund the Office of Community Safety at $3 million, and then, two, to prioritize alternate response as the priority of the OCS. That, and to define what alternate response is, when we pick up the phone and call 911 at a future point, hopefully no more than a year from now, if an expert at the 911 call center says, this situation that's been called on is not best suited by a law enforcement officer, but rather an alternate response, whether that's a licensed clinical social worker, peer support specialist, EMS of some kind that the city of Fayetteville employs to be deployed and address that matter. So that's what I'm talking about when I say alternate response. And when we look, think about the four pillars that we've somewhat agreed upon, we've already got $300,000 going to homelessness with the Day Resource Center. It's not true that we can turn that off tomorrow and that a director of an OCS could then use that money however they want. If you add up all of the hundreds of thousands of dollars that the police ultimately have control over, whether it's with lead, mental health liaison, PAL, there's ShotSpotter, we're not turning those things off tomorrow so that OCS can then control that money. So let's not hold those figures, $2.5 million in monies that are actually controlled by other departments against the Office of Community Safety. I don't want $4 million. I'm asking for three. So whatever you guys need to ask the staff that's around us today to feel comfortable budgeting $3 million and prioritizing alternate response, I'm hoping that you guys take advantage of this time to do so. And if you don't have any questions like that, I'm going to assume that you guys are fine with $3 million and prioritizing alternate response, because this will be the time to ask.
Thank you, Councilmember. Before I go to Councilmember Thompson, and I've got my question also, you threw out something there about, I thought we were looking at, the discussion would be an additional $1.5 million, and I think I, I don't know if I heard, $4 million or not, but then when you brought the other items, ShotSpotter and a couple of other items, even with this position, we're not looking to eliminate those, are we? Is that what I understood?
So what I'm saying is, you're exactly right, Dean Hare. There is no world where we turn off ShotSpotter tomorrow.
Oh, okay, because I was.
And for that reason, there is no reason to hold $197,000 against OCS as if they have control over that. They really don't. We're not going to turn off the Day Resource Center tomorrow and shut down that building and fire Man of Church. We just hired them. So to say that $300,000 is being used for OCS is just not true. So rather than having $4 million, or $2.5 of it is really not OCS's, it's all these other departments, I just want one and a half additional to make it a total of three, which is a million less than what's on this paper.
Okay.
And let us focus on alternate response, because that's the only pillar that doesn't currently exist. We've got something for homeless, we've got something for juveniles, we've got the retired officers that are boxing with the kids, we've got a lot of activities already working with some of these other pillars. There is nothing right now for the situations that Councilmember Jensen talked about, where she said there is a PTSD, a person who suffered from PTSD in her apartment complex, and that when folks showed up, they said, he's got a weapon, we might have to, you know, it's only going to go one of two negative ways. You know, all the anecdotes that we've shared here, there's only one solution to them, and that's alternate response. So let's focus on that as the number one pillar, or the number one priority of OCS, and let's give it the money that it needs to be successful, a pilot program in three zones by E.E. Smith Rec Center, by Massey Hill Rec Center, and by Clifdale Rec Center. Those are the three areas we identified that needed ShotSpotter because they're the most ripe for gun violence, they're the most ripe for issues that can be benefited from alternate response and additional investment and focus. So once again, for folks that are here today, $1.5 million in additional funding for the Office of Community Safety and prioritizing alternate response. If you don't agree with that, ask the staff around us what you need to, to get comfortable.
Thank you, sir, Councilman Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My colleagues said a lot in that phrase, and I'm just going to paraphrase some of it when it came to responsibility, accountability, budget, priorities. I made this comment earlier, this is one reason why I wanted our priority, which is, our strategic plan priority is public safety. That's why I wanted our police force to be in front of OCS, so we did not get discouraged, so we did not get diverted, so we did not get confused. Because if we wanted to talk about public safety, we have to fund our police officers before we fund an OCS. So we've talked about being on page one. Police officers is page one, item one, paragraph one. Let's not get confused. But my question, reference to the OCS, is, Mr. Yates, you stated that general fund is one-time funding. Am I correct when you stated that?
In the general fund category on this.
Thank you very much. So my next question is, do we anticipate on OCS being here next year? And if we are, why is it coming out of the general fund?
I think you meant ARPA.
No, I meant general fund.
So Councilman, the, some of the funding, for instance, in the ECD nonprofit partners area, was one-time funding for certain programming, that when that expires or that funding's used up, it was one-time funding provided by the general fund. The ongoing funding, are the, the areas that I've highlighted for certain are those things which the city has that are general fund dollars, which we would definitely consider as part of that consolidation. And again, this is a table of OCS and OCS-type activities. It's never meant to illustrate that these are all the programs we'd move under OCS, but some of those other funding sources are specific to activities we wouldn't move necessarily or were that one-time funding.
So, I got it, I got it. So let me make it clear. Do we or don't we want to put these programs under OCS as illustrated in this sheet that you gave us?
I think the recommendation at this point is, is part of the strategy, is to sit down and look at each of these programs and what pieces and components should be operated under OCS and what should be coordinated with the OCS efforts.
So as Councilman Hare stated, and what is recommended by staff, is that we do not change what we have already been doing, we just add. So the $1.5 that he's asking for is going to be in addition to the five cents that you're asking for. Correct?
That would be correct.
Thank you very much.
And so, thank you, thank you, Councilmember Hare. When we look at, and Councilman Ben Vinti and I have had this conversation about where we currently don't have direct funding. We currently do not, in this community, have alternative response. You and I have had that conversation. And I have shared with him that, you know, one approach that, and the approach that he outlined is, if you've got four starving puppies, three of them are doing well, one of them isn't doing well at all, or ain't getting any food, isn't getting any food, do you feed the one that's not getting any food first because the other three can limp along and survive? Or do you come back and you feed all of them equally so that they, and the one that doesn't have any food, well, he gets a little bit, but it doesn't get as much as the others, you know, because he's already starting at a deficit. It all depends on how you want to look at the four pillars. But clearly, under alternative response, we currently do not, in this community or in this budget, in our organization, have where we would send someone out like the Durham Hart's mom. We don't have that. And so council could say, that's a missing piece in our armor, that is something that we want to prioritize one way or the other. Got it. But what we have in the budget is, when we look last year, and there was a request for a victim advocate, and the folks are here, I think, from, that are here. When we look at the Phoenix Center, we look at the Prove Project and others, the council, not an OCS director, not the city manager, the council directed that. Remember we had the conversations about the victim advocate?
Mm-hmm.
The council directed it. The only reason that is one-time funding is because when we got to the end of the budget last year, we realized that we had $40 million in ARPA funds that we need to expend.
Mm-hmm.
But when that ARPA money is gone, it's not going to be my recommendation, it's not going to be the police chief's recommendation, that these types of programs, maybe not the partners, but these types of programs go away. And it won't be the OCS director's job to then come back and say, council, I don't think you should do victim advocacy, because the council said we're going to do this. The council said we're going, and so what I look at the OCS director doing is, the OCS director would be the persons and the group that would say, we have a contract with the Phoenix Center to do X, Y, C services. Are there other people who can help us complete those services? Who's monitoring that contract? How does that fit into the larger umbrella? But there is not, in any conversations that I think y'all have had, where you're standing up another layer of government that, away from the city council, when your budgetary process, where you're doing right now, that they would decide, they would decide where the money comes. That's why I said, this is your budget now. And when I gave you your budget last year, you said, we want to do a victim advocate.
Right.
When I gave you your budget before, your council said, we want to do sound thinking. Y'all never asked what my opinion was of ShotSpotter.
Okay.
So I go, I'm supporting your point, but I'm also supporting the power of the council to say, the OCS is a hybrid, but it really is on the council to decide where and how the funding is, as Jeff said.
Okay, thank you, sir. Before I go for her first round of Councilmember Green, let me ask this question. So the, the $1.5 additional that is discussed for OCS, how do we move forward with that with, with the structure of OCS not in place yet? And, and without knowing how the functions are going to be run, you know, run, how the, how the functions are going to function out first? How do we go with the $1.5 mil? And I'm not, I guess you don't have to do it and answer now, but that's just my thought before we go to Councilmember Green and then back to Councilmember B, Councilmember B.
And your buttons, if you, if you.
Yeah, there, she's on there, unless it deleted, but I did see her.
Yes, there you are. Yeah.
Go ahead.
All right. So maybe this is a good time to say I'm glad I wasn't in this session last year. So I'm going to ask a couple of things that are probably things I maybe should know, but it's been a big learning curve. So some of these, the items on the budget, particularly around the Office of Community Safety, to me, don't, excuse me, don't quite fit. And I understand, I understand the intent of what was done. So let me just start there. The, my concern a little bit is the clarity, and maybe it goes tiny bit with what Councilmember Hare just said, but the clarity of the director of the Office of Community Safety, because to me, we need to utilize that person's, are we willing to utilize that person's expertise and knowledge beyond what we have? Because I don't think of any, any of the council members have that extensive knowledge and background, and what I'm hoping that we have captured in the processes of hiring someone that we've gone through over the last several weeks, because I know y'all have been in the midst of that. And I feel like some of that director's duties would be to identify and standing up a program where there are services that we lack and where there are services that might overlap, and be part of that process of helping the council get to a budget. But I do not want to see this position not get funded, because I think it's vital to move forward when we, as a community and city, say in our strategic planning, that the number one priority for us is public safety, and this is a tool in our toolbox to get there, we've got to follow through with that. So I also believe that the, we need to have serious onlookers, as Councilmember Thompson said, on the police department, I think that's our number one priority, and then understanding, for me, of how we move from the office, the standing up of the office itself, to actually getting a budget that makes sense, and some of these items. And some of these items listed on this proposed budget to fund it, to the 4 million, don't necessarily link to me, they don't connect. That was more of a statement than a question, but it's kind of where I'm at, because I'm, I'm a little boggled. So I, it's not a clear picture for me.
Councilmember?
Thank you, Dean Hare. I wanted to address some, I think both councilmember Hare and, and, and councilmember Green's concerns about the order of operations, the cart before the horse. We need a director who's got the expertise to build out this office, and I certainly have a lot of hope and confidence in whoever we hire, just because of the nature of the kind of work that they do, that they're going to be somebody who understands what the best practices are, and they're going to make the best recommendations possible. But this is where I say the quiet part out loud. When it comes to my experience, uh, working in city government, as short of a time as that's been, the city of Fayetteville is a four-legged animal, and we've never entered into this type of field before. And doing OCS, hiring social workers, is asking the city manager to grow wings. And that's, that's, or the city of, uh, uh, City Hall to, to do something so completely different, it's like growing wings. So I am highly concerned about the pushback that a director's going to get about hiring social workers. I am afraid of the pushback that is going to come from leadership in City Hall that says, we've never done that before, don't you dare ask for it, don't you dare recommend it. So I need to make it clear to our city staff, because it's up to city council to give the direction ultimately, that we do expect not just people with the license to carry firearms, but we're going to hire some people with the license to also help people in a different way. And that's a departure from the norm. But if we're not clear about that, as sort of the founding members of council who are starting this department, I think there's a lot of room for error and a lot of potential for this to become just something that checks the box and doesn't actually do what I think it ought to, which is revolutionize public safety in the city of Fayetteville. So I need us to be very clear, this, the director's going to have all the authority in the world to say how their office operates and what they do first and all that, but I want us to make our intentions clear, that are expectations of them. If we hired Director Gibson for the Parks and Recs Department, and we told him, basketball's very popular in Fayetteville, then we expect when he opens up his first rec center, if this was 50 years ago, it would have a basketball court. Now, he might not build the basketball court first, he might say baseball, you know, we have got room for baseball, it's going to be a little bit cheaper to put some squares out there, and we can create the diamonds first. But he knows, deep down, when he got hired, basketball was the most popular thing in Fayetteville. So that's going to be a priority. So I need us to be clear, no matter what we do, no matter how much we fund, ideally $3 million, we make it absolutely clear to our staff, so that they make it crystal clear to the future director, we want alternate response here in the city of Fayetteville. So we give them the room on how to do it, but we're the ones who are telling them where we want to end up. And then, I, I'll just leave it there for now, thank you.
Thank, thank you, councilmember. And as we, uh, as we get ready to move forward, because we're not going to get this one answered and funded all out today in, in our conversations, so let's just take that into consideration with the additional agenda items. We're gonna, before we go to a second round with councilmember Thompson, let's listen to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Hare, and thank you as well, Mr. Benavente. I want to say this clearly, with no ambiguity. There's no pushback from staff for what council directs and funds. When you look at the Office of Community Safety chart that you have in front of us, it was not council that talked about hiring a mental health professional in the police department. It was not council that talked about a victim advocate, or sound thinking, or even a day resource center. All of those ideas, all of the progressive things that we do beyond standard city services, came from staff who worked closely with the department, and we worked closely with the citizens. This is our life's work. Since 2015, when I came back, the only people who are around this table, who were, when I came back in 2015, are not here. That was the mayor, Mayor Protem. I appreciate, and you know, we have talked about the passion for this work. There is nothing that we're going to do to enter, to, to move or subvert the interest and the need of the community to move in this area. The concern that you see in the budget is one that is a tension that we always have. I can't make money without council giving me the direction to fund it. If y'all, social workers, 911, police officers, mental health liaisons, homeless, any and all of that, it is never pushback from this manager or this staff, because we're here, we're here in the community, and we see the needs. We would, would love to have the Durham Hearts model. And councilmember Green as well, I, I appreciate and look forward to going through the list with you about what fits into the pillars and doesn't fit into the pillars. But ultimately, it is councils and, and our, and our need to balance services and do new things, that is, is the real tension here. There is no pushback, because we live here too. We go down the street and we see the people who look like they're in a mental health crisis. I think I've told you all, in my neighborhood alone, there have been two instances where the police have been called, one for violence, right across the street from the manager, on Christmas Eve. Had a house party two weekends ago where the whole street was covered. I live here too, I get it. So you don't have, there's no pushback from us at all. It is just the balancing of what we have and what we want. So, and I will tell you, the challenge we've had recently is in finding a director who's willing to come here and bring their talents to our community. So I'm selling, I'm selling the community on, and, and folks, if y'all can help us identify great candidates, but already we, I don't know where we'd find social workers, but you're getting no pushback from me. I don't know where we would find licensed clinical social workers, but you don't get no pushback from me. But I tell you, I'm looking forward to this, to the conversation. I've seen the community need, the staff has brought, brought it forward, and we are looking forward to whatever council decides about whatever funding level is in here. But again, there's no pushback from this manager, police chief, or city staff at all, because the needs are out there, we just need to make sure we balance it so that we can still make sure we have parks and recreation facilities which are open, we still have police officers and firefighters who are here, we still have engineers, we still have custodians, and that's their ability to pay.
Thank you, sir.
But the passion, we, we have the passion right there with you.
Yeah, okay, thank you, sir. And before, since we've got a couple of new members that haven't spoken yet, before I go to councilmember Thompson, let me have, uh, councilmember Hondros, and then councilwoman, Courtney Banks-McLaughlin, correct?
Thank you, Dr. Hare, and chairman today, I guess. My question, on this Office of Community Safety slide, and I apologize for my tardiness, I had a conflict that I could not move. The, there's four columns there, the one is ARPA funding. Refresh my memory, is the ARPA funding one-time money?
Correct. So the ARPA funding and some grants, and this is, we discussed this a little earlier, not everything on this chart is ongoing funding. There's some more one-time allocations through ARPA or through the general fund, that when the funding runs out, that program expires, and there'll be a decision point of the council and staff to continue, or the council to continue or not that program. And what we try to do is show you the spectrum of OCS activities, both in our research and under your four pillars, that we believe kind of are OCS-like in that discussion.
Yes, sir, thank you, and I appreciate that. And so have we identified funding? Because we have, out of almost $4 million, you know, almost 1.4 that's ARPA-funded, so have we identified funding to replace that? Or are these programs going to go away, or a combination of?
They'll be funded through at least 2025. So we'd expect to have some of that conversation as, as we go into this process next year for a discussion with the 2026 budget. The ARPA funding is still in play for another year.
Gotcha, yeah, because while the funding is there, it may be appropriate to have that listed. If it's not there, then, you know, i- i- it would not, it would not be a fair picture to have, you know, programs listed that aren't funded. So thank you for the explanation.
Thanks, team. And as we move forward, right now, we're still on bullet one, so we're, make sure we're together, we're on the Office of Community Safety. Councilwoman McLaughlin.
Thank you. Just for clarity, with the Office of Community Safety, I see the total 1.5, then the total just overall for OCS activities, that's the $3.9 million, correct? City manager?
That's correct.
I mean, okay, so, when we brought Dr. Tate down, one of, one thing that he mentioned as far as, we need to figure out what's the priority. Have we even decided on what that priority is? Because for me, when I think about priority from just the stats that was discussed, the main priority was, of course, with public safety, was violence, prevention and interruption. Our four pillars are here, it's the mental health, the homeless risk reduction, youth opportunities. So for me, I think everything aligns with what we identified our pillars, our pillars are. Another thing, this is the importance of collaboration, you know, our city service, we're providing funding for our public safety, our police department. We're looking to try to hire someone that deals with mental health. The county plays a role in social ser, well, social service, mental health and things like that. So I think we need to do a better job with partnership, because it's like we're going outside of our ram, although we should, but it makes a difference when we have other people, other partners coming to the table, because we're still trying to find someone for that position. It's been almost a year, it's, it's been almost a year to find somebody for, for that, for that position. Have we had a conversation with the county to see if they have somebody that would be interesting and partnering with us? Because we, we're all in this together, what the city does, what the county does, is gonna, everybody gonna play a role, and everybody gonna be impacted by this. So I think we need to stop trying to figure out ways, the blueprint is laid out for us, it's about partnership, it's about getting funding. We put funding together and work as a, you know, collaborating, we can do a lot with those funding opportunities. And I know I've mentioned in the past, as far as grants, we need to make sure that we're continuing to apply for these grants, because we just got funded, like for the crime commission for the PAL program, so we need to continue to identify grant opportunities. But I just wanted to mention, and we just need to, I think, focus on, is our priority, our priority alternate response, or our priority is more towards public safety with our, our police department? So I just wanted to lay that out. But I think the Office of Community Safety would be great, but we need, we need the funding and partnership.
Okay, thank you. Let's go with councilmember Thompson, and after that, councilmember Mario. And once again, you done?
I'm done after that.
You done? And let's just remember, uh, let's try to move on.
Yes, sir.
To the other budget items.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a question, I just have a comment. For us to eradicate a lot of the mental and homeless and crime that we have, it takes a village. One organization, one program, one director is not going to do it all. Councilman, Hondros' question was related to a statement that I had made earlier about these additional projects that are one-time funding in the ARPA. I don't plan on getting rid of the Prove Project. I don't plan on getting rid of the DRC. I don't plan on getting rid of the Phoenix Center. I don't plan on getting any of that. So that one-time funding comes away, it's going to have to come out of the general fund. That's what it takes for all of us to consistently and collaboratively communicate to work together to get it done. So let's not say, I don't want this to be part of OCS, when it is part of OCS, and it's going to get funded part of OCS. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, I just had one final comment here, just to address some of the concerns that I heard. I reached out to the department director of the social work department, the master of social work department at Fayetteville State, Dr. Kimberly Hardy. She's going to be coming to our budget discussions to explain to everybody how excited she is for us to get an OCS started, how many of her students are uniquely positioned to stay here, because Fayetteville State has the most non-traditional students of any UNC system school. These are people who are not in their twenties trying to explore the country. These are people who have families, who have bought their homes and who live here and want to stay here, and are uniquely positioned to work for the city. And, and so this myth that we're never going to be able to hire the necessary staff is one that I'm looking forward to dispelling. You know, the, the misunderstanding about alternate response is that it only addresses mental health. In fact, issues of trespassing, issues that ultimately can escalate into violent issues, are things that are mitigated by things like the Office of Community Safety in, in other areas. The district attorney for Durham, Ms. Santana DeBerry, discussed this when she talked about, in a given month, hundreds of calls that come in, calls for service that come in, were really generated by four or five people. And when you address those four or five people, you address hundreds of actual calls for service that eventually can become violent situations. So I think, you know, we're making a mistake when we try to divide mental health calls versus violent type issues, because really, it's an arbitrary distinction when you think about, if we catch these things early enough, they never evolve into the types of violent things that we're having to deal with, or that our police officers are having to deal with. That's why Durham can brag and say that they've saved their officers thousands of hours of police time in the first six months that they were in operation. So this ARPA discussion, every director of every department has to make a case for how much money their office, you know, deserves every year to city council. So whether or not these things ultimately live under the Office of Community Safety is, is not, I think, the biggest question for us right now, because, again, the chief, the fire chief, the, the chief of, of, of police, the director of Parks and Rec, they all have to come to city council and explain to us why they deserve a particular budget. That's going to be a forever question moving forward. I don't want us to be hampered down on these dollar figures. I just need us to recognize that $4 million is just not an accurate portrayal of what we're dealing with here. We need at least $3 million on that first row. Right now, it's this 1.5. We need to turn that into a three, and we need to prioritize alternate response here in this city. And I'm repeating some of that, because I know Mayor Colvin just walked in, that's where the discussion is right now. How can we get $3 million on that top row and prioritize alternate response? Because we've got things for violence interruptors, we've got things for homelessness, we've got things for whatever made-up pillars that we want. The one thing that we don't have is alternate response in this city, that needs to be the priority. And, and honestly, I haven't heard anything from Dr. Tate to dispute that. He did give us, or rather, we gave him two sheets of paper, one said mental health, one said violent crime, and, and I asked him, does that mean that we can only do one or the other? And he said, no. Does that mean that we have to not have alternate response, because that means we're not addressing the 20,000 violent response calls? He said, no. So let's not use that as an excuse not to have alternate response as a priority. Again, I'm hoping that we can just move forward with the $3 million budget for OCS and prioritizing alternate response in our budget this fiscal year. Thank you.
Sir, Mayor, you are, you are now back in with us, of course, you heard just what we were speaking on, we've been on the Office of Community Safety. I was trying to get everybody to the public, safety compensation. Mayor is in your hands.
Well, I don't want to belabor, I'm sure you all have talked about it for the last hour and a half, item number one. Oh, okay. Well, apologize for my tardiness, I just left the airport, we were looking at some new partnerships out there possibly, so I pray it all goes well. But again, just as we wrap this up, I think as we do this, certainly the council, Councilman Benavente's passion for it, at the end of the day, what restrains us is what our capability to pay for all at once, and we've got to be mindful of that. I think if you look at this, I think it's a huge step forward to, to commit 1.5 million. If you look at everything else in this category, it's the highest, in fact, it's twice the funding of the highest thing in here, as we build it out. And, and you know, as I hope, you know, my councilmen will consider, we just don't know what we don't know yet. You have the 2, 250,000, which received money to commit us to the process, here's another one and a half million, which you have now 1.7, almost 1.8 million.
They say it's included in that one and a half.
Okay, so, so now, is this an additional allocation, Mr. Manager? Because that's what I understood it to be.
A portion, the, the 250 original funding from last year is part of the one and a half million.
Okay, well, I, it was, it was not understood that way, but I, I do think, you know, to, to. to increase it four or five-fold with one and a half million, you know, to this year, in addition to the 250 is what I'm saying, is a consideration. While we bring our director on to tell us what it is that we do, the one thing I will say, give credit to, you know, you leading this discussion as well as council, entertaining it, we were doing things already in these four categories, we just didn't have any coordination. You know, and it's not to take away from, from saying that you need to add too, but at least we know what we're doing as we build out a strategic approach to this, you know, in, in our partnership. So I'm hoping council, any action today, you know, what we're looking at today as we work through this process is, of course, the parking lot things, or to go through and see what it is that the manager has recommended and to make changes to it. But we will need to have some decision point as we move next to the public safety compensation, which is also a big number that we've gotta find from somewhere. And, and we gotta figure out how to do it without overburdening, you know, our, our citizens that we represent. So any other comments or questions on that? I think Councilmember Handros, I see your light.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To your point about funding, I was just curious, so Senator Applewhite, as well as others, have mentioned that there was some state money available specific for public safety. Have we investigated that? Have we asked, could it possibly be that they matched the one and a half million or possibly even fund the full 3 million? It was a citizen police advisory board meeting when they started doing their touring over at Senior Center West, or the Bill Crisp Center, I think was the first one, and she was there. And she absolutely said the state is looking to partner with cities specifically for public safety and that there was funding and possibly recurring funding available. So I would just like to explore that if we haven't already.
Well, and I, and I think that, too, for, for the state to create a whole Department of, of gun violence reduction, as well as the White House to create it, one of the key pillars of this, as we work through whatever our contribution is, is to leverage those grant funds, but they're gonna be specific to whatever category. If there's some mental health money for, for co-response, then we'll, we'll look for that. But right now, I know that their focus was gun violence reduction, which the state is, Dr. Tate's benefit, and, and there's money already that I think the legislator has programmed that, that I think that we need to be looking for, and we'll use our lobbyists to do that. But I know there's federal money too, and Jody has been, has been great at, at kind of finding that. And that's what I'm saying, we've gotta lead to where the priorities say we lead to, you know, we may have one thing that we're passionate about another, and I'm not, I'm not discounting that, we don't need to do all of it. But in terms of leveraging the dollars, I think their concentration that I've been able to see has been gun violence reduction. All right. So, all right, council, so we'll guess if, we'll move on to public safety compensation? Mr. Yates?
Thank you, Mayor. So as mentioned on Monday night, when we were talking about the budget and Mr. Hughes presenting the budget, we are recommending a 5 cent ad valorem increase. The purpose of that increase, or the, well, the whole purpose of that increase is to put funding toward public safety market adjustments. The 5 cents is not the full amount of what those increases cost, but it is what's necessary to balance the budget with those increases in there. So the, and I'll just kinda put it on a chart for you, this would take the starting salary of a police officer at step zero and move them to 55,000, five, or 50,555. And you can see all the way down, moves the starting pay for firefighter to 45,000 and so forth. The cost of that is right around a, a little, a little more than eight and a half million. And I kinda put on here too, just to kinda show you the challenges we're facing. As of yesterday, we had about a 75, 75 vacant positions in the police department. That's 17.4% of our sworn. And I know the chiefs got more cycling through that haven't showed up on the, on our, our position control reporting, and more retirements pending. Emergency Communications has 16 vacant slots, that's about 26, almost 27% of your call takers and the folks in the 911 center. And then in our fire department, we have about 17 vacancies, that's about four and a half, four, almost 5%, but they just started an academy. So those will cycle in at some point. But our, our best recommendation, based on the research that our HRD department's done, as well as our competing, competing markets around us, this would be the market recommendation. This also adjusts for some compression issues that we've had, just because of the way that it's changed over, the pay plan has changed over time and shrunk down in some cases, the number of steps. It puts the plan back in place or puts in place the, kind of the year per step approach. It also creates some separation, your fire from your fire lieutenants to your fire captains. One of the things that can happen and what can be a challenge is if there's not enough separation between the higher-end lieutenant salary or higher steps in the lieutenant ranks and the captain, nobody wants to promote because that, it's not financially beneficial to them for that promotion. So we've worked a little bit with Chief Dove and Jerry and our HR, the HRD Director has worked to try to address those issues. So this is our best recommendation. I will point out, this is gonna be an ongoing challenge. There's a number of reasons for that. There's not as many folks looking to get into the public safety jobs. Also, two years ago, when we did our, our market research and our market work, we were leading at that time in the, in the public safety salary arena. So just in those two years, so it's, the, the rising tide in this case will ri, will rise all ships. So I just wanted you to kinda keep that in mind. But our recommendation that's in the budget is to do this, to provide this increase to public safety and to fund it, we would need that 5 cent ad valorem tax increase. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. Our chiefs are here, as is Mr. Clip, to answer any technical questions or any other questions or concerns you may have. So I'll turn that back to the council.
All right. So do have a couple, have Councilmember Herden and Thompson, and I had a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I was going through our docket here and, and you normally provide the, what our peer, other cities are, are doing. I didn't see it in here unless I'm overlooking it. But you're saying that with the 0.05 cents, that in this zero step, well, in this plan adjustment, that we could get our starting officers at 50K or 50,555 and our starting fire at 4,500, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir, I, I am.
So then, for any officers, present officers and fire department, a fire team now, whatever their ranks are, does this supersede them? Where does that put those that are presently in office as far as these amounts at starting prices? You see how uneven or unfair that is?
So to avoid creating compression, which is what that would, what that creates, what we would do is we'd place everyone, based on analysis from HRD, gets put on the steps where they, where they are supposed to be in relationship. So you don't, for instance, if you have a person on step zero and we put in the 50,000, 555, five, you don't keep that person at the 40,000, 43,860 level. You, you bring them up to where their step is and you make the necessary adjustments to avoid that compression.
So you're saying you'll make, so will we be making the, okay, let's say this is, you get this, okay, that the council approves this. Are you saying then immediately, those that are already in the program, fire and police, automatically go up to those amounts since we're gonna have the starting at these?
Sure. And I'm gonna have Mr. Clip, our HRD Director, kind of explain how that would work, because he has a much better working understanding of the actual implementation, so go ahead.
Thank you. So to answer your question, what we would do is, we would make the change in the, in the steps, which would involve all the steps from zero for, for police officer from zero to 10, then we would move them up to the next step as well.
So that would happen immediately if this passed? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Thompson.
I wanna indulge in that question just a little bit more. So if you get what you're asking for, you're telling me that a six-year officer who is now on step two will be getting paid step six? And a 10-year officer who's been on step six will now be getting step 10?
What I'm saying is whatever step that they're on right now, it would move up a step.
So they're not getting their step pay, is what you're telling me?
However, there are 30 that we discussed last time, there are 30 that are kinda off-step that we would also bring them up, give them money for half a step.
So my first question would be is, what will it take to get our officers what we promised them to be on the correct step? That means if you have seven years in the service, you're on step seven. If you have nine years in service, you're at step nine. What compression number will you give us to make that happen? Because that's what I'm looking for.
And we haven't calculated that, it would be a lot more than what you see here.
Okay. Well, that's the number you're gonna bring back to us?
I can, if you'd like.
Okay, because that's my, that's my no-brainer.
Well, one of the, one of the challenges, and we can definitely sit down with you, council, or we can bring it back to an upcoming work session, that when we cover that, the calculations were, the conversation, the calculations were based upon the funding that the council allocated in that year. And so it was, it, it's not as simple as saying that we cut you a step. It was that in many instances, the council compressed from, was it 14 steps down to 10? And so where do you put people on that step? So you now have people who may be in the police officer rank who have been with us for 12 years. They are now at the top of that pay band, and what do we do with them in year three, four and five from here on out? So it was...
Well, if they go to step 10, that's the max they can get anyway.
It, but then what, do they just stay at that step for the rest of their term with us? And so this was, the council in the past, the chiefs in the past, the manager in the past, and I was here for some of those as well. It was the available funding, and in most instances, they, when the range moved and the steps moved, they made, they got the money that would have been in the original step and then some, but the numeric number of the step did not change. So if it was, if it said step two, it was still called step two, but the difference between step one, step two and step three, they got that cash, they got that percentage. We're happy to go back and take a look at it, but this is beyond what we presented earlier to you. What we presented to you and what's in the budget is addressing the compression issues of where, when a person started and someone else started and the range has changed, of them being separated based on their longevity. This is going back and correcting a, a perceived step issue where the council has never passed, was not clear that a step equates to a year. If that is where the council would like for us to go, then I would say we need to probably go back and take a look at all of the steps because it's not reasonable to think that a person is going to only work for you for 10, 10 steps. And so you're building in a problem where, a, a potential issue of where at year 10, a person is capped. When you and I talked about it in the federal government, you have a huge pay scale, right? You have steps and then you have letters associated with them. We can absolutely create something like that, and then as you change a number here, the steps don't change, a person just moves up faster in, in 50 or 60 different step permutations. Here, you have 10.
Well, let me respond to that by saying this, and I've done a little bit of homework. So I know that there was a time where you had longevity pay, and that was to keep people here for a long period of time. Well, if you give them the step pay and the step pay that they would ask for at 10 years, hopefully they will move up to a higher level to give you some more continuity and some more leadership and some more knowledge of their position to help those young ones get the step 10. So I don't wanna, let me, I can't correct what happened in the past to previous councils. Sitting on this council this day, only thing I can do is do my best to make it right.
Yes, and that's, we think the budget in front of you does that. It fixes those issues where the people are too close together based upon their longevity. It does not go back and take a look at a step per year. Some of us were here when we ended longevity, and the longevity was rolled at the police chiefs in, at that time, interest and the managers and councils into the base of the offices who were here, and it was locked in place, along with the other city employees. And so we still, most city employees who get longevity still have a float.
Speakers we need. Can you, I know you're trying to summarize it, but you've got a couple other speakers.
Well, let me just summarize by saying this, I would like for the officers to get what we promised them, to be on the right step at the right year. I would appreciate if you could bring that number back to us so council can discuss how we get there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, and, and thank you for that. You know, before I go to Councilmember Handros, I, I think we're over-complicating it. At, at the end of the day, I don't think they really care what step they're at. They, they wanna get paid for their experience and their service comparable. And the same way that we get comparables for starting salary, we see that all the time. Municipal peer city 1, 2, 3 starts theirs at this number, we can do that for people that have had two-year experience, three-year experience, 10-year experience. We need to, to get where we wanna be, where, where the competitive pay range should be for all of those, regardless if you call it step one or step 100. I think at the end of the day, they want their check to reflect their, their years of experience, their commitment here, and incentivize them the longer they're here. So can we get some averages that, the same way we pull starting salary averages and compare that, I'm sure you can pull step plan comparisons for peer cities.
Yes.
That's the kind of stuff we need, because at the end of the day, we keep looking back and trying to classify it as one thing or another, and it just makes it more complicated than it needs to be. And to talk about what previous budget strategies you had or, or not, we need to know what that number is and if we can commit them to, to addressing it all in one year, or if they give us two years that you phase it in to make sure by year two, everybody is at a medium salary compared to their years of service and experience, I think that's kinda what the interest of the people I'm hearing about, regardless of what you call it, so.
Yes, sir. Officers is one of the lowest-paid officers in the county.
Right, well, what I'm saying is that fixes all of that. To get, to get a medium of, of those who just started, those who've been here and those who, you know, are at the higher end of that, you know, in my opinion, that gives us some perspective. But I'll go to Councilmember Handros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How many FPD employee positions do we have currently filled?
I didn't bring that DNO chief.
But how many do we have filled?
How many filled positions?
333, thank you. Okay, that, that's, that's good enough. So my question is, as we move forward in this process, whether the consensus on council in, in June sometime, when we approve the budget, is, is a, a 1 cent tax rate increase, a 5 cent or a 10 cent tax increase? How do we make sure that money doesn't go to the general fund and is funding
Other stuff.
This police, this police salary that, we're talking about fixing the base salary compression in the step plan and all that? How, how do we guarantee that?
That's a Jeff question.
You do it through, through what you allocate into various funds. And so if the question is, if council wanted to pay the police officers $50,000 to start, is that, is that, how would you ensure that it, once it's funded?
I'm looking at this slide at the bottom, it says, "Advaler tax rate increase of 5 cents is recommended for public safety market compression adjustments." So how do we make sure that nickel, if it, if it's, the nickel is the number, stays there and not somewhere else? That's what I wanna know.
Well, you do it through your, through the budget ordinance. And so the, what you see on the screen is what, about $8.1 million, is that? Eight and a half million dollars. The 5 cent tax rate increase, Jeff or Budget Staff generates what?
About 7 and a half million.
So the tax rate that you see proposed at 5 cents doesn't cover the, fully, all of the adjustments which are here. But, so the answer is, is that you would do it through your budget ordinance, we would do it through the communications we're having now. do it through the communications we're having now, and it would be locked in place. That's, is there a difference?
So to your point, the, the nickel doesn't fund the full eight and a half, it only funds seven and a half. So I want to make sure that we don't take any of the seven and a half and put it somewhere that we're not allocating it for, is the one thing. But further than that, my next question is, who is responsible, who along the chain in all departments is responsible for approval in favorable police department pay raises, their step up, and, and/or promotions? Is, is the chief solely responsible? Is it the chief, the manager's office? Is it HR department? Who, who are all the decision-makers that approve a pay raise, a step up, and a promotion?
The...
So pay raises, the annual ones that we give, like what we're discussing now is, is under the budget review under the city council. If there's a promotion that happens, it kind of goes through the police department process, and we kind of work with them in those promotional processes. Even the city manager is involved to approve those as well. Does that ans, is that what you're asking?
Maybe. So is there a situation where, let's say Dino's police chief for a day, so I recommend this officer or these five positions for a promotion, is it possible that that gets vetoed by the manager or HR?
Yes. And how that typically works is for the upper ranks in the police department, we do an assessment center where we put people on a promotional list. When that promotional list is created, the police chief presents it to me and, and HRD, and I typically sign it. In my twenty-five years of working in local government, I have only one time seen a name on a promotional list that I knew something about that was so concerning to me that I could not, in conscience, sign my name to it and look at you as a council, as what you've told me are your priorities. And I'm not sure if that's, if council's aware of what that instance was. It's not something we can talk about in, in open session, but I stand behind it. I was standing along with it with the HR department and the city attorney as well. And that's what, it was a very difficult decision, but it has only happened once. But at the same time, it is not a rubber stamp. And we actually had a conversation just last week, I think with HRD, the police department and city attorney's office, about how we can streamline that process so that we don't run into that one unique situation again. But the process is probably the fairest that I've ever seen in that a outside vendor comes in and does a full-blown assessment center of anyone who chooses to be promoted. A numeric rank is assigned to all of those people who successfully complete the assessment center. A list is drawn, and then as vacancies come up, the person who is next on the list is appointed into that promotional opportunity. And again, it's only been one occasion when that has been an issue, and it was something that was, had been very recent, that again, if the council were aware, you would have also had concerns and would have supported fully the decision that I had to make.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. So I'll close with this. Out of three hundred and thirty-three sworn positions, based on the data that I've been given since I've been on council, so just under two years, I would need a lot more data to be convinced that there's only thirty officers that are affected, that's less than ten percent out of this compression. So until I get that data and we can put that in the parking lot, I'm not convinced that only thirty are affected.
Well, I think some of that, and we'll definitely get in, we can write that in the parking lot, Jeffrey, if you would, with the attrition rates that we've had and the turnover we've had in the five years, that you have people who start, leave, you have people who start, get promoted, and so they're maybe in a whole different compression band. One of the things that I didn't say, and I'm very cognizant, Mayor, too, on time, is that the step plan is not a guarantee. Even if we put in a step equates to a year, every year, the city council has had to make the decision to fund the step plan, because one council can't bind another. And so if we put a step equals a year, every year, you have to make an affirmation that we are going to fund new pay raises, because you're increasing the budget. Every council has to do that. This year, and what you see in the budget is, in the base budget beyond the five cents, but not the five cents at all, but just in the base budget, the current tax rate, we funded, found a way to fund the current step plan for council's consideration. So when you look at what's on the screen, that additional five cents, that is the new money to move to the higher salaries, market salaries, make the adjustments that you see on the screen. But the base is in there, but that's a decision that the council has to make every year. And so if we move to this salary that you see on the screen, to honor next year's step plan, I don't know if we calculated that, Jeffrey, but it was going to be, you're committing not only to, saying a step a year, you're committing to, to this council and future councils, that every year we're going to fund at a minimum this next step, just to, which is what, how that works out.
All right, Councilman Thompson, we'll have to...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Doug. I do appreciate that, and I do recognize that, but you also have to take into consideration that some of those individuals that were on step will be up to step ten, where they won't get an additional raise. Some will have moved away and went some day places, they won't get that pay, so, and it wouldn't come out to a five-cent increase every year either. But my question is, from the vacancies that we have, where's that money going currently?
So in 2024, the year we're in now, the, if you remember, we had about a nineteen million dollars assumed for efficiency and attrition. So the city typically budgets for a certain level of vacancy and attrition, and the largest contributors to that are the police and fire departments, because they're the large, they're the largest departments, so they have the majority of, between them all, they have almost half the employees. So in this budget, you have a recommendation at eight percent, which is about eight million dollars of attrition savings, plus an additional thirty-five frozen positions.
Let me, can I flip the script just a little bit?
Sure.
How come we couldn't use that money to fully fund the police department and then ask for a five-percent pay raise to tell our constituents that the reason that we have it because we changed from per capita avalon, and that's why we lost all this money? Wouldn't that be more sound for us to spin it that way? Help me somebody. Help me somebody.
No, no doubt about it.
The police department is fully funded at, in last year's budget, and this year's budget based on our recommendation. To balance the budget, there were about eight million dollars of current services above the funding availability that we had to reduce, and that's across the spectrum, and we can, we'll provide that list to you. As far as the attrition or the vacancy savings number, that number helps the entire general fund balance their entire budget. So it's not that we reduce the police department specifically, it's an assumption across all funds, or all the general fund.
Totally understand that. So my next question would be is, what would you have done if the police department was fully staffed?
The city would have, we would have had a challenge, because if we, if we're unable to achieve that vacancy number or that savings number, then we would be, we would be in a position where we have to use fund balance. But I will tell you, one of the things we've done is worked with the chief, there are only so many officers and academies that can be run in a year. So one of the things we've worked with the chief on is to be sure when we do that estimate on that number, that we're not taking away his ability to fill every class he can. What we've done is we've said, above that, that have been vacant for more than a couple of years, we're going to assume those are savings.
That's the thirty-five we're talking about, right? That's thirty-five or thirty?
So we have traditionally not been able to fill those, so we call, call them terminally vacant. From that perspective, it doesn't make sense to reduce or to spend that money in that space, because we know we can't put them through academy anyway.
I won't. Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, so council, as we, as we go to this one, I am for the parking lot, because I don't, don't think y'all have had many answers to some of the questions that have come up. You know, just an outcome of you, council member. Again, if this is, if our step plan is what, zero to ten, where are the other positions that on here? These are just the ones that you, you need to move now, but what kind of impact does it have for the numbers that are not listed? Because all we have on here is zero to ten. Also, like Councilman Mahondros's question that, that he had asked about, as well as council members there, in, in terms of, you know, I've been here, what, ten, eleven years now, and I've never seen all four hundred and, what's our sworn officer, huh? Yeah, I've never seen the four thirty-three number completely full. And as you said, what does the, what does the, those positions that have never been full, you know, when that four thirty-three was recommended in 2013, that was before license plate readers, AI, camera systems, you know, there were a lot different Fayetteville that we were dealing with. How have, how has technology made it more efficient? Because I know you got, I would like to hear what that number is on, on vacancies that have never been filled, you know? And then I, I want to see how you arrived at, at, at the number that you had. You take into account attrition anyway, so. Kind of wanted to hear about that a little bit. And then you said something, too, that there were eight million dollars, if, if, if we don't have the, a good base of understanding from the last budget, it, it's the starting point for this one. And so you said there were services over and above the eight, and you used that strategy of the freezing of positions as a, as a savings out of primarily this area, so we didn't have to use the fund balance. But during the audit report, he talked about the fact that we did use the fund balance to balance that. Can you reconcile those two?
I can. So what, when they did the audit report, what we were, what was referred to as the indicator that the LGC uses to indicate the fiscal health or the fiscal capacity of an organization. In our case, the city council has intentionally used fund balance in some ways, not, not by operations, but by projects. So you can use fund balance, it's recommended to use fund balance for one-time items. That's an appropriate use. The metric that the LGC uses will indicate the use of fund balance, and what they are looking for is an explanation of what you did with that fund balance, because that's the part that matters. If you are funding salaries, for instance, with fund balance, then you're not creating a physically sustainable budget. And what they want to be sure of is that organizations are putting enough resources behind their operations. But when you fund things like the, I believe one of those was the Black Voices Museum, or the, the other history museum, or the MLK Park, those are appropriate uses for your fund balance as one-time items, or if you wanted to do a CIP project for that. Those would be appropriate uses, because they're one-time in nature. What the LGC, that's an indicator, and what they want to hear is, what, what is the reasoning? What, what is it that you did to get to that?
Right, yeah, I'm tracking you on that. So I guess you can get the answers to that, just to, to point to what he was talking about.
I can.
Because, because if it was for a recurring expense, they would have an issue with that, because it, there's a structural deficit or something, you said. But for him to point it out, I want to kind of know what he was alluding to for what we did use it for. And, and so, and, and even though, counsel, I know you've, you've budgeted for it, even though we really have not felt the impact of the county withholding that money, we, we at least had the previous year's sales tax amount according to the agreement. So it froze it at that amount, it didn't give us the...
Twenty-two's amount.
Yeah, and so we have not seen the impact of the avalon switch yet, and you're saying there was already a, a nineteen-million-dollar hole.
So you saw it two times. So you saw it in the twenty-four budget, because we made more money from sales tax in twenty-three than we did in twenty-two. So when we went down from the twenty-three actual revenue to the twenty-two frozen amount, there was a portion of sales tax that we lost in that process.
Just a portion that they would grant back for the, for the, for the annexed area, right?
No, it was the, what I would call a rebate. So what they said is, we're not going to give you any growth. We're going to change the methodology in two years, but you're not going to get any growth over the next two years. So your twenty-two is going to be your baseline, and that's all you get. So they, in twenty, twenty-three, while that agreement was getting in place, we saw growth, but that growth now has gone to the county. So we are experiencing the same level based on that analysis that we had in twenty-twenty-two, so there's real cash loss.
Right, but this is not for the overall sales tax that took place in, in the city, it was just for that part that the, that the agreement spoke to, which was the newly annexed area, correct?
No, sir. No, sir. It was, it was the total, it was the annexation, and then everything over the annexation was rebated back to the county. So the annexations, our interpretation, they were frozen at the twenty-two level as well.
That's what I'm talking about. I want council to understand that.
And then there was an additional chunk, and I can certainly, we can spend more time on sales tax.
Yeah.
There was an additional rebate back to the county above that, and I believe that was in the vein, projected to be in the vein of eight or nine million dollars in twenty-twenty-four, and a similar or more amount, because we're losing out the growth.
All right, so it sounds like a parking lot item. Let me see, Councilman Thompson, you had, oh, Councilman Benevente had his, even though he didn't push his button.
I'll let him go first.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, because, you know, budget's my thing. I want to look at the police budget, the actual and the revised. You have, in twenty-twenty-three, sixty million actual. In twenty-twenty-four, you have sixty-nine million revised. It is recommended for twenty-twenty-five, sixty-six million. Where's the actual for twenty-twenty-four is the first question. And the second question for twenty-twenty-four, how did the E-911 budget triple?
Okay, so there's a couple of, a couple of different pieces of that question. If I could get my book.
Thank you, sir.
And Mayor, I wanted to circle back to your question on this slide about the positions. The, the eight and a half million that we're talking about, it's not only these positions that are shown on the slide, it's all those above, that are not step but above, like police officer, it's the captains and sergeants and on up, so that includes everything.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, councilman, just so everybody can be with us, let's see, we are on, going to be on F... We're going to be on F-35, I believe? You're referring to the fund summary, police summary?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So a couple of things about that. The actual through twenty-twenty-three is the latest actual data we have. We are in, in twenty-twenty-four right now, so there's still, we are in the process of closing April, so there's still April, May, and June, and then what we refer to as the runout months, which are the accrual period. When we look at the revised budget, what we are talking about are the, primarily in this case, it would be the role of encumbrances. So every year, at this time of year, all the contracts that the city has, we cut POs and we do all those things, we have a cutoff period. Based on the accounting principles, generally accepted accounting principles, what you have to do, it's called an accrual, okay? So you either account that into this year or next year, right? So when we have not completed that or not received something or have an outstanding contract, instead of using the current year's budget, so twenty-four, instead of saying, okay, PD, you have a million dollars of outstanding contracts, instead of saying that reduces your twenty-four budget availability by that million, the council and their budget ordinance approves us rolling those, what we call rolling those encumbrances and contract commitments to the following year. So the increase to the revised budget is that role of those encumbrances, those contracts. So, and it's the same thing would happen in E-911. In a given year, if you have a large piece of capital equipment or a large piece of equipment that's purchased or something unique, the following year, you're not going to buy that again, so the budget will ebb and flow based on some of those. And when you have a smaller budget, that's equipment intense like E-911 is, you'll see this kind of pattern, because in one year, you may buy a couple of consoles, and the next year, you won't buy any consoles, and then all of a sudden, you've got a million-dollar expenditure and back down to five hundred thousand. So that's, that's the reason of the difference. Generally, what you want to see is the spending authority of twenty-twenty-four compared to the spending authority in twenty-twenty-five. That's what that illustrates, the revised budget against the recommended budget.
So my question then would be is, where do we get that money from?
That money is, each year, is part of your fund balance calculation, it's not part of unassigned fund balance, it's part of the restricted, I believe it's called restricted by state statute. Is that right? So, and the LGC requires that you put a certain amount, restrict a certain amount in your fund balance for that purpose.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
Sure. The LGC, the statute requires that we set aside that money for those commitments that we carry between the years.
That's a lot of money.
It, it can be. It, it can be.
All right.
I'm done. Thank you, sir.
All right, Councilman Benevente.
These are probably just parking lot items. I just need an exact explanation for, still on F, page F thirty-five. Looks like PS, PSAP operations. What that one and a half million was and why it's down to just four hundred thousand. What was that million dollar expenditure this past fiscal year, month or fiscal year? It looks like specialized services bureau is going up almost eight million dollars. I want to know exactly what the eight million dollars we spent on. Oh, sure.
What he was trying to explain, our, our budget is, those are nine-one-one funds. And the budget is based on what we spend the previous year. Like previous year, we replaced our generator. So that was three hundred thousand dollars. So that's, it's encumbered in money. It may not have paid out yet, but it's encumbered in money. So it's pretty much based on if we spend more this year, we'll get more next year. If we don't spend more, they're going to lower our budget. And that's the money that's, uh, he says statute. We can't spend it, we can't put it in general funds, we can't get money off of the, uh, um, taxes on it or anything, or the, the, what is it? Not taxes, what is it? The, that we make money off of? We can't get money, we can't use that money for anything other than what we ask for it for. So if we need to replace consoles or if we need to replace chairs this year, we're going to ask for more money. So that's why it fluctuates year to year.
Thank you. And then I guess, uh, that, that answers that. I guess just specialized services bureau, what exactly are we doing with the additional seven point eight million? Again, that can be a parking lot, uh, thing for a future meeting if need be, says uses by service three-one-two in that row. And then, could you remind me, I feel like you guys have talked about the state legislator mandating some dollar figure that if, you know, we have an incredible year of hiring, uh, police officers, that there's always some supplemental dollar figure? Can you, can you clarify what that was? I feel like I've heard that before.
Are you referring to fund balance?
Is it fund balance?
So what, um,
Could you restate the question a little bit more?
Yes. My understanding is that there is some requirement from the state level that any municipality has to address and, and, and it's sort of, it's not up to us having a budget discussion about it. If they end up hiring more folks to join the police department, that we have to budget for it, and we got to get it from somewhere. I'm maybe misunderstanding it. I'm trying to get clarity.
Well, we have a law enforcement, uh, special, um, vio, uh, vio, so, um.
It sounds like you're talking about former cops funding where we get money for, we absorb those costs.
There you go.
Over hire.
Is that what it is? There you go. Can you explain that a little bit more to me?
Yeah, um, we have said that, um, in the past, that, um, if the chief were to find out that, um, there were fifty people who were leaving, let's say, Boston Police Department, and they were looking to come to Fayetteville, he has the ability to hire, over hire his authorized strength. And what, and when that would happen, we would come back and we would tell council, council, we need additional budget to, to fill and pay for those positions. That's, it's just, he has the ability to go out and over hire, and that's partly because looking at the attrition rate that we have is that, um, and to my knowledge, we've been filled where we had every position filled once. And it only lasted for a couple of days or weeks or so. And then so, so where he had to have one over, over authorized strength, and he had dropped down to three. So it was an over hire.
And I guess the reason I'm asking that question is that it seems like we have a bit of an insurance policy built in through that mechanism to where we're freezing X amount of positions for multiple reasons. But if for whatever reason, we get to thirty or thirty-five and we need to over hire an additional twenty, that, that's always, uh, an ace in the hole. That's always
It is.
a mechanism that he has. And the reason I just, I want everyone to recognize that is I don't want us to, you know, be overly concerned with somehow being behind the eight ball, or we could have hired more if we had only budgeted. Well, that's not true. We actually have this alternate mechanism that if we end up hitting, you know, a hundred percent cadet recruitment of graduation, you know, that we'd still be able to do twenty more. So I guess I'm just saying that because I feel like we have some concerns from council members about what is considered filling all these vacancies and versus freezing. I- is, is that, does that help a little bit with that concern, that fact? Okay.
And I would just add this in if I can, mayor, real quick on this. One of the things too that we want to be careful on is, the chief, um, who would be one of the first ones to come up and tell you that, uh, when you have vacancies, you do have vacancy savings, but you also then have an obligation for overtime. And because there are times where he has to make sure he has a certain number of people who are available on the street. And we are at points very concerned that for a city our size, and where the mayor was absolutely nailed it, that the technology and policing and other things have really helped us get down, um, our crime rate. We're also very concerned that, uh, depending, we don't want to get to a point where we have critical vacancies where the chief is having to actually counsel bureaus or special assignments to make sure we have enough officers in uniform. And, uh, chief, am I misstating that? And so, um, uh, we think deflect, but we think we've held a careful balance with what we have and the positions that we're talking about, the terminal vacancies that Jeff talked about. But I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that along with that also means that we're going to have increased overtime for those people who are still here.
Well, I think Councilmember Thompson just asked for this, and tell me if it's already on the board. The actual amount we budgeted last year versus the revised amount was about three million dollar difference, correct? How typical is that? Because, I mean, as far as I've been on council, the police budget always exceeds what we budget. We, we say it's only going to be sixty-five. We said that last year. Ended up being sixty-nine, almost seventy. I have no misc, I, I assume it's going to go up past sixty-five this year as well. You know, the budget is, is aspirational in so many ways. I think in particularly as it relates to law, uh, the police department. So can we look back and just be honest about the fact that every year we go over budget? And we should probably assume that that's going to happen again in the next twelve fiscal months. And if we've got to look back at previous years, I mean, go back five, I guess, you know, can we do that?
Just for clarification.
Please.
We don't overspend our budget. So we can provide a comparison of adopted versus revised budget, which is where those things, the changes to the budget. But, um, if we did have an over expenditure, and I think Robbie addressed this on Monday night, we would have a stewardship finding in our audit. So from that perspective, we are not overspending a budget. But I can certain, we can certainly provide you a history of the budget revision, uh, adopted versus revised, and even actual comparatively. That's not a problem at all. I just wanted to clarify for everyone.
Yeah, help me understand the semantics of that. So if we say actual is sixty-five and they spend sixty-nine, that's not going over budget. We call that what? We call that a revision?
If, if your revised budget is sixty-nine million dollars, that's your legal spending authority. So that is when we look at, for instance, in the revised budget this year, the, the budget ordinance, which is law, is at sixty-nine million dollars. The, they are, um, at that point, that is their spending limit. So we can't overspend the budget that's been approved or revised. And what council does in their budget ordinance is they adopt the original budget.
Right.
Then for those required encumbrances and carryforwards of those contracts, the council also approves those.
Because you bring it back to council over the, if, if a particular six months in, turns out we need to spend more money. Like, when did we spend that three million dollars in the past, uh, three months, twelve months?
That, I would have to look, look back at that, but the, the-
But you brought it to council.
The expenditure, the budget ordinance allows for those specific things by statute which we carry between the years to automatically roll between the years. Now, if we were going to change the purposes from that contract, then yes, we would have to come back to council and say, we want to do what we'd prefer to as a designation. So if we were going to do something different, but we have to honor those contractual commitments, and we have to create the spending authority because the budget authority runs out on June fir, or July first, we have to create the spending authority to allow those contracts to continue. So that's that encumbrance role. And in your budget ordinance, it authorizes that encumbrance role.
Okay. And then in that case, maybe this is just a parking lot thing. Maybe we can get a better explanation of what legally defined contractual encumbrances took us from sixty-five million at the beginning of June twenty-twenty-three to June twenty-twenty-four that allowed for those three million dollars to go over. Because again, it seems like almost an expectation, expectation we should have at this point. Why are we hiding the fact that, you know, even last year, you know, we're saying that we knew that there were some contracts that we had to, um, allot money for. Did we say that in the budget ahead of time? You know? I, I, basically, I'm wondering, are there going to be more things like that this year that aren't currently in the book?
You will always have encumbrance carryforwards.
Sure.
The organization has had those since the dawn of time in Accrulla County. The, um, the budgetary impact, okay, this is where it gets a little different. You're talking about budget authorization. Revised budgets, permission to spend. The actual impact, so what actually gets spent in the year then becomes your actual and what you see in the CAFR or the ACFR. So that was the document presented on, um, Monday night. So as we go through the next three or four months, we go through the closing period, all those contracts will be analyzed, all those encumbrances and commitments, POs, open POs, prepaid travel.
If I, if I can, um, uh, one of the things we had with the parking lot and questions, we would love to sit down with you and Jeff to talk about that. We've, um, had occasion to think to sit down with, um, a couple of the council members to talk about the accounting system. We can, and we'll be, and we'll answer the question with the entire group.
Great.
But something as simple as we received a grant or we appropriated money from ARPA to for some purpose or something that got added could speak to the three million dollar growth.
Right, because I, I could be misunderstanding. I just feel like last year we said, yes, the police department gets sixty-five million dollars. And then something happened over twelve months that made it sixty-nine.
And we definitely can, we'll, we'll do two ways.
What was that? If you're saying that it was just good things happened and great things we can brag about, cool.
Not sure yet. What we'll do is we'll sit down with you, but we'll also track it as a question for the council. So as, as we're doing this, council, under each one of these sections, I hope, uh, I'm sure the clerks have it, what the questions are, Mr. Ewery. And, uh, so, you know, this is just the first pass at it, guys. So we're, we're looking what it is, we're asking the questions, but the, the things that go to the parking lot with the questions attached, the next meeting, we expect to, you know, have the answers to that. We know you don't have everything at your fingertips, uh, that we can think of now. So we do have quite a few more, and we're about to lose a couple of council members. Kind of under public safety, council, I'll send you an email, um, regarding, um, some E nine-one-one questions that need to be answered, probably in a hurry. But, but, uh, I know about to lose Councilmember here, and, uh, I don't know if Banks McLaughlin is gone. But, um, I'll, I'll circle back to you on that. I know we've got something. I think, DJ, did you have something specific on, under the next item before you left? What time you have to leave?
Uh, in, in, in about five minutes, but I wanted to make sure that my parking lot stuff was in.
Okay, so we saw your question about the, uh, water sewer in the Bodydune Johnson Street area.
Right, I, yeah, I sent my email out. I'm going to text out to everyone. But I don't know if I had sent it to Mr. Yates, and I wanted to make sure that there be some response, uh, for those items. I also wanted to ask, um, I didn't get a, the, the answer I wanted when I asked this before. But at our last budget session, our last budget session of last year, when I had the big concerns about changing over some of those septic tanks that are in the Johnson Street area, I was requesting, or we came up with the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand that was allotted to get that started. In my last conversation, it's, it was as if that two hundred and fifty K had disappeared or it was allocated for something else. I think the last conversation I had with one of the assistants that they lined that up with the infrastructure coming down, uh, Helen Street, uh, for the stormwater. And it, it wasn't, but I just went on alone with the response that was given. So if you could put in the parking lot, I would love to see about having, uh, the, some discussion on, some funding for
Infrastructure over there.
Infrastructure, water and sewer for the Johnson Street area to help with the affordable housing. And, uh, I know this is a small one to you, but I wanted to receive an additional seventy-five or at least put a seventy-five K in for the community signs, uh, budget. That's a really big thing and a heart lift for communities throughout the city. I want to make sure that was in the parking lot.
And the fifty thousand is already in the parking lot, the fifty thousand additional that you're putting, it's in the parking lot.
I wanted to, to make it a seventy-five.
All right. Well, thank you, Councilmember Mayor. Do we need to vote to excuse him?
You're going to put everybody else in the vote?
Yeah, because you're about to leave, right?
Yes. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
You're not voting on anything.
All right, all right. Just didn't want all your stuff to be affirmative. You don't know what you're affir. All right, well, thank you. All right, Councilmember Stormwater Enterprise Fund.
Excuse me, Mayor Colvin, just want to be clear that any member of council could put forth a motion. So if, if the interest is that your vote is not counted in the affirmative, you may want to have a vote to excuse.
All right, is a motion by, he can't put it for himself, can he? All right, so, so the motion by Councilman Green, second about, Councilman Mahindros to excuse, Councilman Mayor, discussion. All right, those in favor? All right, have, we'll see you. Those against excusing him? All right, so Councilmember Benevente is against you being excused. All right, so moving to Stormwater, y'all.
All right, um, so as part of the recommended budget, you have a one dollar stormwater increase recommended per month. I want to clarify just a couple of things, and then we also have Byron here with us to talk through some of the project updates. What you have in front of you is our working model projects out to twenty-thirty. The big drivers are really the transfers, which, um, when we look at transfers in this case, this is the transfers to the capital. So that's your Pago capital funding. And then our other uses is largely debt service. So the biggest cost you have, or one of the biggest drivers in your stormwater, um, budget, which would be expected in a, in a utility, is that you have infrastructure cost. So the stormwater plans that we've approved and looked at and projects that we've looked at, those all have a cost. What we've tried to do is pick and, and sort through those projects that made sense to use debt on, revenue bonds paid for out of the stormwater fund versus Pago or, or cash funded. You can see across the bottom, the unrestricted net position. One of the big reasons you want to keep that net position very healthy in this case is in case of catastrophic failure, possible grant matches, operations, those things. We keep it a little higher in stormwater than we would maybe in the general fund because the cost of your catastrophic failure in the stormwater is more expensive. When you start talking about replacing bridges, or not bridges, but replacing stormwater drainage and those kinds of things, or when you have failures and collapses, those can be very expensive. So with that in mind, um, what we've done, I pulled together, uh, we pulled together kind of what's included from twenty-five going forward before Byron does the update. You have about a hu, just under a hundred million, about ninety-six, almost ninety-seven million dollars worth of projects that are getting additional funding going forward and are planned from twenty-twenty-five to twenty-thirty. And a lot of these are included already in the, in your master plans and those different components. You see some of those are funded with grant funding. Um, you see enterprise fund, Pago, which is the cash funding from the enterprise. And then we also see the revenue bond funding that'll go in there. And the way that revenue bond will work is, as we get bids and awards for that, we will take those to the LGC and issue that debt. So with that in mind, I will turn it over to Byron real quick. If you have any questions on stormwater projects, um, I thought it'd be good to give, to do a quick summary of kind of what those projects are and where we are.
Yes, I'll be very brief with this. So you'll see in the upper left-hand, uh, portion, we've got projects that'll be, uh, either under construction now or will be under construction, um, this year, uh, which are Neville Street, Adam Street, Sunberry Drive, which you guys approved a bid recommendation this past Monday, Ray Avenue, and then North Street, which we have, on your agenda for the twenty-eighth for a bid recommendation. So this is about seventeen million dollars in active construction. And you'll see we have, are utilizing, um, FEMA grants or, uh, ARPA funds to fund a majority of this construction. Lower left-hand side, you'll see these projects that we currently have under design where we have either been awarded FEMA grants. We have submitted for, uh, FEMA grants or received Golden Leaf Grants or Disaster Relief Mitigation Fund. So, uh, these projects that are under design that we So these projects that are under design that we currently have grants for or pursuing grants for, close to forty million dollars in project value of that, about sixty percent or so of it would be utilizing federal and state funding. Then you see our current projects that we currently have under design, Sesame Stron, Rosemary Locks Creek, that we would propose to fund with a revenue bond in this coming fiscal year. So these projects are near shovel ready. We then have Remish and Rockford Drive, which we've programmed in in fiscal year twenty-eight to build with the revenue bond. And then the stormwater portion of the Hensdale Drive improvements at one point five million dollars. And then just a bullet point in the proposed five-year plan, we've got Aaron Lakes West Dam overtopping protection, which we'll go into more detail at the June work session. There is the City on College Lakes Dam. We'll go into more detail in the August work session. We also proposing to continuing the watershed studies, the Drainage Assistance Program, our Spot Repair Program. We're also going to begin surveying our MS four system. That is a mandate by our MPDS permit as well as in outer years prioritizing these projects from the watershed studies that you've been presented throughout the years, so.
Are there any questions? Oh, wait.
This is for Mr. Reeves. Thank you for your presentation. One, what, do you remember off the top of your head, when was the last time the stormwater fee was increased? I know it's been several years, six or eight?
I think it's been five or six fiscal years.
Twenty nineteen, thank you. And then second, you mentioned revenue bonds rather than grants, so that's debt we're looking to issue?
Correct, so in in those projects, that doesn't mean we're going to stop looking for grants. If we can get them grant funded, then we won't issue the debt. But to balance and be sure, you have to balance your CIP out. So when the model indicated we needed to put in that bond funding, we included that bond funding. And it's not uncommon to use that for stormwater.
And we just issued or just approved, council did another hundred million dollars worth of projects, right? Wasn't that at a work session or council meeting recently?
Those were the proposed solutions. We, those were not approved to go towards the project development. Y'all accepted those so we could prioritize them in our CIP.
Right, right, right. Well, keep doing what you're doing, getting us some shovel-ready projects and go get as many grants as you can.
All right, councilor, the courses comments or items for parking lot on this one? All right, look like that's been the cleanest one yet, huh?
Okay, and Mayor, as I mentioned earlier, we left environmental services off the list inadvertently.
You adding stuff?
It was inadvertently left off.
Well, where's my environmental services man with that Pittsburgh stuff on? Let him come to the front and present.
So the proposal is, I think, ten dollars a year. That would then put that at two seventy-five. And that would also allow us to maintain loose leaf collection. Yes, so moving it from general fund funded to being funded by the enterprise fund. The thought there is that the folks who are able to access the service, the people who pay the solid waste users' fees should be the folks that also pay for that service. Otherwise, you're using your general fund tax rate to have the mall pay for it and they don't get services, businesses pay for it and they don't get the services. It's, but it is, does require, and that's not all of the ten dollars. It's not, there are other things in addition to the ten, to that, that are, make up the ten dollars. But still at two seventy-five divided by twelve is what, eleven dollars, twelve dollars a month, well, one forty-four?
The increase is about eighty-three cents a month.
Eighty-three cents a month. And no service changes at all to your residents.
All right, Councilman Mahendros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At one time, we had talked about maybe doing a subscription service for the loose leaf collection and or yard waste in general. I'd be interested in putting that in the parking lot, see what that looks like as well as, you know, some of the things we do inadvertently, inadvertently have a have a negative impact on other things. So like loose leaf collection, while I know that's popular with many residents, the negative impact that I don't know that many are aware of is it negatively impacts our storm sewers. So if we don't get the pine straw and and leaves curbside timely with when your pickup is, some some people don't, aren't aware or they get them out whenever's obviously convenient for them. So they might sit out there three weeks, four weeks or two months before the truck comes through to pick them up. Every wind or storm that comes through is blowing them into their neighbor's yard as well as our storm sewers. And as you know, I'm sensitive about our storm sewers, so would definitely like to look at that as possible subscription. And then going back to the stormwater, Mr. Mayor, you asked if there was a parking lot item. We have talked about doing a tiered stormwater fee, so I'd like to talk about that in the parking lot when we can. Thank you.
And I think that study is underway and we can definitely write that up as one of the questions. One of the things too, Mayor, on the parking lot, as we've used it in the past, has been for additions, subtractions. We are added the thing up here now of questions, but you also have the ability, as y'all know, to send us those emails and we'll capture those too.
Yeah, I mean, and I think you can't, we can't really get to the math until some of these questions are answered because it's, you know, it's pertinent to that, so. But but yeah, this captures what you'll get us information back and we'll put a timeline on it and go from there. Okay, any other comments, questions on that? All right, council, we move to transit?
Okay, so transit, I just wanted to, we were talking about enterprise funds today, so we wanted to share transit with you. I want to jump to the last slide in the interest of time. What I wanted to demonstrate or show is first, before we can make any rate changes or route changes, there has to be an equity study done. So to do that, we are in that process, it'll take a little while. So one of the things we have interest in is looking at our routes to ensure that we have efficient routes and how to meet those services, whether by augmenting the route or changing the route or how we do that. And then also how we maintain our rates at the equitable level. We're recommending the use of fund balance, close to eight hundred thousand dollars as a one-time injection into transit to maintain the routes while we do those studies. And then once those studies are done, then we'll have a robust conversation with the city council about what those route changes are recommended as. And when we looked at that, we looked at particularly routes that had less than a hundred riders daily. So from that, beyond that, it continues bus funding for replacement. I will say for for Tiffany's benefit, there was about two million dollars of other above current level or above the current funding availability that was asked for that was not recommended. On the funding side, this is kind of a quick breakdown. You get about five point three percent from your fares, you get about twenty-five percent from the federal government, about sixty-three percent from the general fund. And that's about eight point seven million dollars, almost eight point eight million, recommended for twenty twenty-five. And then also about seven and a half million from other sources. If you remember, a portion of motor vehicle taxes goes to, five dollars goes over to the transit system. So I just, in the interest of time, I wanted to give you that information. We can certainly follow up. If you have questions, feel free to send them to us and we'll get with the transit folks and and get those answered for you.
Monies go to if it's not going to transit?
So five dollars of that goes to transit. Then the rest of that, a portion, I think five dollars goes to the general fund and the twenty dollars then goes to offset your general obligation bond debt that is for your transportation or your infrastructure streets, projects, the twenty-five million dollar geo bond. And then some Pago funding also for paving projects. Okay, any other questions on on that? So here's where we are with the parking lot. We had one item that, you know, we've talked about the SL two and the process of having to cut about eight point one million. One of the things that we were kind of our la, the last cut, which would be the first thing that we would recommend adding back, knowing kind of the commitment of the community to right away and litter pickup, is there's about five hundred thousand dollars of additional right-of-way maintenance and litter pickup that was beyond kind of what would be our contractual obligations and so forth. So as staff, we are recommending that that be one of the things considered in the parking lot. If we were to add that, add, start adding back services, that that would be the first thing we would consider. And then I have the fifty thousand dollars, which would make up seventy-five, fifty thousand in addition to the twenty-five that's already in the budget for neighborhood signage. With that, we have a list of questions and some parking lot items. We'll sort those out and add to the parking lot list those things that are that are for parking lot and answer the questions. The next piece, then on May twentieth at two PM, that's Monday, we'll have another work session. We're going to look to talk about the general fund, a little bit on CIP tip. Then we're going to talk through council questions and parking lot items. Councilman?
Mayor, if I may, I just have one question. Let's back up to transit one time, please. Your stat says that sixty-two percent of their funding comes from the general fund, which equates to how much of that fifteen million dollars?
It's about eight point eight million.
That's enough to fund the police department without raising taxes?
Cut bus service?
I didn't say that.
Oh.
I'm just looking at the numbers.
Oh, yeah. Same number, yeah.
Thank you very much. You answered my question by not answering. You got you. Thank you, sir.
So with that, again, the rest of the process, on May twenty-eighth, we'll have a public hearing. June third, planned the final work session to get consensus. And again, we'll follow up with council lot, council parking lot questions, parking lot and questions, and then hopefully on May tenth adoption.
I did, I did have an operational question. I know we've applied for or or authorized a purchase for electric buses. What is the plan to phase our fleet in so it's consistent? Very beautiful light blue buses with can do, very terrible looking burgundy buses from back in the day. So do we have a plan to phase that in along with the, because part of what we told the Department of Energy that we were going to try to be, you know, less, less emissions and that kind of thing. So any any plans on how we budget, you know, I I think, what I'm a little, I'm trying to follow the the new CIP model because it used to be a piece of paper that folded up and it was long as the table so you could track stuff, but is it, yeah, is, yeah, I don't know. Yeah, it just consolidates. I'll have to get my glasses or whatever. But what's the plan to bring the fleet up to date or consistent coloring anyway?
I can help with that and Tiffany has noticed here as well, so she can make her way forward. Our buses are purchased and replaced on a schedule, age and miles. And so you have to go through applying and and when you come on up, you correct anything I've said that's wrong, come on up to the podium. And so I think we, with the purchase that you had in the budget, we're also looking to bring forward two more electric buses, different manufacturers. We were held up at some point in time because Tiffany, in her research, had identified that the leading manufacturer was getting all these contracts, didn't have the capacity and didn't have the quality buses we wanted. So we actually kind of held back, but I'll turn it over to you to clean up and close out on that.
Yes, sir, our leading manufacturer that we had that was named in the grant actually filed for bankruptcy. And so I sounded the alarm and so we changed vendors, manufacturers, which delayed us. We have four buses, two in winter of twenty-five, two in the winter of twenty-six that will be coming. We already have funding for them. We just applied for the loan note grant for four more additional buses. We will have three burgundy and white buses remaining. We can always have those buses wrapped with our.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Yes, we can just have them, right. It would be better to wrap them since we know we're going to take them out of service in the next up to five years. But we can always do that if we.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense. Just your your brand identity should be consistent, you know, so even if you can't afford a new one, just.
And so that, Ms. Melnatt, there's one thing I want to do before you close out is I wanted Jeff to walk back through the questions and read them out to make sure that we, thank you, Tiffany, to make sure we have answered, we've captured all of them. So if you could, Jeff, start at one and two and and councilmembers, if we misstated it, please help us make sure we get it just right.
Okay, so what we have first is the the police department compression and costs to move steps to equal years. So we, what it would cost to place everybody on the steps equal to the years?
Them being a four-year officer, if they're on step two, what is their pay going to be when they get to step four? So forth and so on. Where's their pay going to be if they're on the step six and only on step four, step eight and step six, so forth and so on?
And I believe also, Mayor, you asked about comparative.
For for the different levels.
Right, for the different, for different, different stacks.
Market rate, we gave that to y'all at the presentation of what the market was and that was the fifty-five-five-five. And.
But that's the beginning, right?
That was the beginning, but it also then talked about what the top was and everything in between. So Raleigh may have twenty steps, but the top pay may only be ninety thousand and I was, so it just depends on how you break it up.
Right, and and I believe that's what Jerry was communicating, that every step moves. It's not just the two we showed you. We just showed you top and bottom. Then next, we have sales tax discussion. There, and what I mean by that or have that up there is there was some question about, Mayor, you were asking about how the annexation payments work versus the rebate and the freeze from the county. And we can show you that revenue loss over the last two years.
And one second, Councilman Green, I think you had something on the first one as well. Did we get, capture those in the first one?
I don't think so. I don't know. I'll think about it.
Okay, if you, please let us know because we want to make sure.
I will, I will.
Is that, and that's the interest on the sales tax. Did I frame that right, Mayor? Okay, then we, next, we had budget changes in the police department, particularly, we refer to that as the activities, which basically looking at adopted budget to revised budget, what that looks like. And there's also a request for some history related to that. To demonstrate that. Then there was additional funding that was requested, at least for discussion, for water and sewer at Johnson Street. We'll get that number together. Additional money, this was already in the, captured in the existing parking lot, but additional funding for community signs. Mayor, before you got here, there was some discussion about one point five million dollars additional to OCS. And that'll go in the parking lot. And then the next was, what does it look like to have a subscription for loose leaf and yard waste? And then finally, an update on the tor, stormwater tiered rate structure. Is there anything that I missed or that we didn't capture? Councilman?
That we missed, just a general question. So the one request or initiative for water and sewer funds for Johnson Street in the Bonny Doon area and across the street part of that's in my district as well. But how would that work with, I mean, we have annexed areas from, what, two thousand and four? So twenty years, they haven't gotten their water and sewer serviced. So I'm just not sure how those two would would coincide as far as equity. I mean, I'm willing to have the conversation. I think everything in the city should have water, city water and sewer, but just need to be fair to everybody. So I'm not sure how that works.
Well, Mr. Hare's not here, but just briefly, the if water and sewer is available in the Johnson Street area and the people aren't connected, they have the ability to connect. They would just have to pay the connection fees. Where Councilmember Hare and the past council had the conversations, whereas that Bonny Doon is, appears to have a lot of vacant land and is ripe for redevelopment. The downside is, is that Public Works Commission and or no utility puts the the invest in putting lines down until development is coming and there's an off, and someone's there to pay for it. And so that was where, even though council allocated, I think it was two hundred thousand dollars, and I know who I'm looking for from budget staff from last year for that, there was not an opportunity for development to come where we could invest two hundred, two hundred, I see a million, two hundred thousand dollars. And so we were looking at the sidewalk extension program, what Sheila left, I see Byron's over there, to take the sidewalks on down Helen Street to connect over to Johnson Street. But we will pull that back out for him, but that was as I recall from last year.
You good, sir? No, okay.
I'll be brief, though. Thank you, Mr. Manager. You kind of hit the the nail on the head where I was going. So I would, rather than spending, based on all the funding challenges we're looking at, would rather open the conversation with our utility partners and say, hey, look, because it, I understand they're typically looking at a business decision as well, taking, putting infrastructure in where new development's going to happen, that's going to use those, that infrastructure and those services. If there was ever a time that the Bonny Doon area was going to be redeveloped, we're looking at it. I mean, with Amazon coming and all that's going on on the San Faye and Black Boulevard interchange with two ninety-five connecting to the the west end of Black Boulevard. to the, the west end of Bragg Boulevard, I mean, my prediction is, in the next ten, fifteen years, we won't recognize Bragg Boulevard from two ninety-five back to the, uh, four oh one bypass, overpass. That whole stretch is gonna be, there's gonna be a renaissance. So now's the time for that investment in infrastructure. I don't know that that's our burden.
Well, thank you, Councilmember. I, I mean, I, I think anytime we're talking about, you know, if you look at what year Bonny Doone was built, probably in the forties or fifties, and you look at West Fayetteville, that should have been online ten years ago or more. Uh, I, I mean, I don't think the one impacts the other. It, it is embarrassing to have parts of the city within the city that look like it's in the county. And PWC is, is gonna make a ratepayer-based decision, even though they're gonna be collecting the money perpetually. So I don't, I don't agree with that. But cities and, and we have to figure out where we want to push the growth to. I mean, and I think probably as we're talking about this, and we've got an infrastructure bond and some extra money, that we can be smart about how we figure that we push the resources where the growth is coming, and not wait for the private market to drive it, because we may miss it, you know. But, uh, fair point, it, it's all, um, it's all parking lot-related. So any, any other questions on that before we, uh, oh, Mayor Proten?
Um, so I have a question on what Councilmember Honduras said. If, if we fund this and it goes through, where does that put them on the timeline compared to the people out at West? Does it jumpstart? Does it go to them before it goes to the people out West?
Well, sir...
As the PWC liaison, no. Because the south, in southwest part of Fayetteville, we still have annexation projects thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine that still hasn't been completed yet and won't be completed for the next two years. So I'm pretty sure they are, uh, uh, well-equipped to take on multiple tasks, but I think their priority would be in southwest Fayetteville. Thank you.
Okay, so I guess, is that the answer to my question? Because I know if we end up voluntary annexing, that it has to be done in two years. And I know this isn't an annexation. I just wanted to make sure that what was being done out West